Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to countycommissionbroadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zuckovich. Welcome to the March 18th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. We use this time before our meeting begins to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And first off, we would remind you, Exploration Place is busy this week with spring break. They have their wildlife exhibit. And commissioners, they have a new film in the dome. And it's really kind of a, well, it's really a little tongue twister to say. It's Animalopolis. So try to say that three times and see how well you do. But if not, take time and head out to Exploration Place and check out the new film. Also coming up at the zoo on April 4th, we have Easter Extravaganza. Always a big hit. Lots of people like to go out and hunt for the candy and see the animals. So mark that on your calendar as well. But we all know, everybody here knows right, that Friday's the big day. We have 1:45. We also have that other game in the morning that David Spears likes to talk about. But 1:45, our shocker men will be playing. And at 6:30, our shocker women will be playing. And so I've made you a little cheering help here because we want everybody to hear you. And also because we know sometimes we can't hear Commissioner Ranzau during the meeting.
You can talk into this today, too.
Okay, I'll do that.
But cheer on our shockers. Use this, yell loud, go shocks. We really want to see the big game on Sunday, we are hoping. And of course, Intra-Spank Arena will hold a free community watch party. The shockers win Friday, they'll hold a watch party on Sunday. So stay tuned, tune into media, tune into their Facebook and Twitter and all that, and find out what time the game and what will be happening then. We do have on today's agenda this morning, we have two proclamations. We have appointments to county advisory boards. We will be setting a public hearing date for building codes review. And commissioners, look how many people are here today. Isn't this great? We have got such exciting things on our agenda that all these people wanted to be here. Or we have retirements. And I think we have a couple of people who've been here a really long time. And so let's wave, a little shout out, all the fire and public safety people and all the sheriff people, and then this whole group of legal people here. So we're going to wish our long-term retirees best of luck. We're all very envious. And I think they're waiting for this meeting to get underway so they can get their clock and get out the door. So Chairman Ranzau, how about if you get the meeting underway?
Absolutely. I want to hurry up and get this done, make sure we're done before the game's on Friday.
There you go.
With that, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Sedgwick County Commissioners for March 18th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation to be led by Dr. Michael O'Donnell, Grace Baptist Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, Lord. You say in your word, "This is the day that the Lord has made. We'll rejoice and be glad in it." And so we are following that edict today. And I pray that you will help us rejoice all day. We thank you for spring, as it's just a few days away. And we think of renewal, we think of focus, we think of growth. And Lord, certainly, we want that for our community. And we thank you for those who have served and serve in so many areas. I know there's some today who will be retiring and leaving many years of service. And we thank you for their involvement. We thank you for our elected leaders, Lord, such a tremendous responsibility. And so often, the crunch of finances seems to be overwhelming. And Lord, I pray that you will give tremendous wisdom to these leaders, that they can recognize the importance of the projects and the different programs that are offered by the state, the county, and the city. Lord, help us, most importantly, as individual citizens, do what we can do to help others. Help us share our lives, help us share our time and our talent and our treasures. Help us focus on what you would have us do today. And Lord, if it's just a simple smile or maybe helping someone with a difficulty, we know there are those all across our community who are hurting today. Some who have loved ones in the hospital, some who are going through a loss, some who are struggling financially. And Lord, I pray that we will truly be our brother's keeper. And as we head into the spring, we'll sense a renewal, a focus, a renewal of passion, and the opportunity to be able to serve you. And Lord, one day, we can hear you say, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." And we ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor O'Donnell for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Rule call, Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peterjohn. Chairman Ranzau.
Present. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item A, proclamation declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. It says, "Whereas children are the key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resources, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are as a community extending a helpful hand to children and families in need. And whereas providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for children free of violence, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can assure that Kansas children will grow to the full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ranzau, Chairman of the Board of the Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 15th as Child Abuse Prevention Month." And here to receive the proclamation is Vicky Roper from Kansas Children's Service League. Correct?
Yeah, correct.
Mr. Chairman, can I go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution?
That's a good idea. You may. Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. Got a little ahead of myself. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Vicky Roper, and I'm the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Director for the Kansas Children's Service League. And we appreciate so much you signing the proclamation declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Why is the prevention of child abuse and neglect important? Because all children deserve great childhoods. And we have some children coming around now that are going to give you some folders with some special information about activities going on in Sedgwick County and around the state during Child Abuse Prevention Month. The pinwheel is our symbol, and it represents those great, healthy childhoods. Children that are raised in loving and supportive environments are more likely to grow up and help create secure, healthy communities and to be more productive, prosperous workers. Children that are raised in stable families do better academically, are shown to be more financially successful, and contribute more to society. We all have a role to play in making sure that our community is the best place for children and families to thrive. There are simple actions that each of us can take every single day to help reduce family isolation and stress, which are two of the major risk factors of child abuse and neglect. Such actions include making yourself known to new neighbors and families, volunteering your time at pre- or post-school programs, providing time for parents to have an occasional break from the rigors of parenthood. Great childhoods and healthy, productive futures are undermined by adverse childhood experiences. Those are ACEs. ACEs include things like child abuse, physical, sexual, and emotional, neglect, parental stress, divorce, parental unemployment, parental mental illness, and addiction. And greater than one in four people have experienced at least one adverse childhood experience, and one in eight have experienced four or more during childhood. The greater number of adverse childhood experiences increases the risk of long-term consequences. Reducing ACEs leads to positive, long-term outcomes for children and communities, including lowering risks for serious health problems and helping children grow into more prosperous and productive adults. Since 2010, Wichita's seen a 22.5% increase in the number of child abuse and neglect reports and a 36.9% increase in reports screened in as needing an investigation. Non-fatal child maltreatment has an average lifetime cost of $210,000 per victim, according to the Center for Disease Control, including healthcare costs, lost work productivity, and costs incurred in child welfare, criminal justice, and special education systems. Examples of programs that work to strengthen families are early home visitation programs, hospital-based shaken baby syndrome prevention programs, quality childcare and early education, services and centers for parent education and parent support, media and public awareness campaigns, specialized services for families with substance abuse, domestic violence, and mental health issues, and community collaborations and coalitions such as the work of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. What we're doing this year in April, 30 state, city, and county proclamations like this are being signed all across the state. We have activities going on in 36 counties, letters to the editor going in at 170 newspapers. March 28th is Family Fun Day at the Sedgwick County Zoo. We'll have reduced admission from 12 to 4 p.m. by getting tickets from Pam Noble at On April 10th is Wear Blue Day, so everyone wear their blue. On April 11th, Sporting KC is recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and everyone's wearing blue. They're a blue sports team. And April 16th is a statewide event at the Capitol where the governor's going to be planning pinwheels in a pinwheel garden with children from some of our childcare centers there. All events are on the KCSL website at www.kcsl.org.
Thank you, Vicky. I think Commissioner Norton has some comments.
Thank you for being here today, Vicky. You know, we've got such a rich system trying to deal with this issue in our community, KCSL, certainly statewide and locally is a leader in that. But I'd remiss to not talk about the Children's Home and Youthville and St. Francis Community Services and CASA, the Child Advocacy Center, all which try to wrap around children and prevent neglect and abuse and human trafficking and predatory actions on the Internet, all of those things that are maladies of our community. And I'm so thankful that we do have that system. Many years ago, when I was with Target, back in the 80s, I was on the first Child Prevention Abuse, Child Abuse Prevention Council with Judge Burgess and Sherry Butenbach and Helen Cochran. And that later evolved into giving it over to the Kansas Children's Service League because we realized that the issue wasn't this big, it was this big. And that a group of very dedicated folks, but very small and without funding, were not going to solve this problem very easily. So thank you for standing and being the guardian of the gate and protecting our children and being there at the worst times in their lives, and their family lives, too, so many times. I'd be remiss to not talk about the Child Advocacy Center that we've worked so hard this last year with the fundraising campaign to take the old Lincoln Elementary School and have a one-stop shop for law enforcement and the judiciary and the health agencies and other agencies to be sure that we really protect our children at that really critical time in their life. So thank you for being here today, letting us do the proclamation once again, and talk about that kind of hidden little secret in our community that people just hate to talk about because you hate to think that children don't grow up healthy and happy and frolicking in their backyard with pinwheels. And that's not the case for every kid in our community, and it's very sad. And I'm glad somebody does it every day, wakes up thinking about not only the kids and their family, but the kids in our community that can't catch a break or abused and neglected or hurt and will struggle many times the rest of their life unless it's taken care of and resolved because it lays latent until they get to be older and they don't become as productive as citizens they can. So thank you for being here today. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, just a couple of things. The groups that you mentioned are all part of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. It's 130 people from 60 agencies that have come together to work on this complex issue. And folks can call 1-800-CHIEF if they have questions about parenting or concerns about child abuse and neglect or anything that they would like to talk to on our parent help line, so.
Thanks again, Vicky, for coming and for everything you do. And thanks to your little helpers that were here today, they did a great job. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring Sedgwick County TB Awareness Day.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. Whereas Sedgwick County joins the Centers for Disease Control and the Global Stop TB Partnership in raising awareness about TB-related problems and solutions annually by commemorating Robert Koch's discovery of the tuberculosis bacteria in 1982. And whereas the CDC has proclaimed "Find TB, Treat TB, Working Together to Eliminate TB" as a 2015 slogan for World TB Day. And whereas today's adults should expect to see a world where no one dies from TB, and today's children should expect to see a world where no one gets sick with TB. And whereas TB organizations continue to pursue solutions for faster treatment, quick and low-cost testing that is accessible to all, and an effective vaccine. And whereas TB remains a worldwide problem, though great strides have been made to control and cure this disease, and Sedgwick County continues to experience cases of acute TB and latent TB infection. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ranzau, Chairman of the Board of the Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 24, 2015, as Sedgwick County TB Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to educate themselves about tuberculosis, its prevention, and treatment. Commissioners?
I mean, we accept the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranzau.
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is Adrian Burnutz, our Health Department Director.
Good morning, commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burnutz, Sedgwick County Health Department. Thank you for proclaiming March 24th, 2015, World TB Awareness Day, and also for this opportunity for me to provide information about tuberculosis. Before 1940, TB was a top killer in U.S., the United States, among infectious diseases and the fourth-largest killer overall. TB is a disease caused by bacteria, and there are two types. TB infection, which is also known as latent TB, and active TB disease. And it's important to understand the differences between these two. People with TB infection have the bacteria that cause TB in their body but don't have symptoms and are not sick because their immune system is keeping it at bay. These individuals cannot spread TB to others. However, they can develop TB later in life, and there are about 10% of those with latent TB infection that do develop active TB, particularly if they're in a high-risk category, and I'll review those in a minute. Active TB disease, those with TB disease are sick and display one of, one or more of the following symptoms: unexplained weight loss, loss of appetite, weakness, and fever or heavy night sweats. Symptoms may also include a productive cough that lasts more than three weeks. People with active TB can spread infection to others. TB is spread from person to person through the air, usually in confined areas for a long period of time. So it's not easy to get TB. It is easier to get the common cold or the flu than it is TB. Anyone can get TB, but some people are at higher risk: homeless individuals, alcohol and drug users, foreign-born individuals from countries where TB is common, prisoners, residents of long-term care facilities, those who are in close contact with someone with TB, and those with compromised immune systems. Today, TB is a relatively rare occurrence in the U.S., but it is a serious disease and still does occur. Both latent TB infection and active TB disease can be cured. In 2014, we treated 10 cases of active TB disease in Sedgwick County and approximately 400 cases of latent TB infection. There are many more cases of TB infection than that, but we did treat that many. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Adrian, I don't see anybody asking to speak, but I just want to applaud you and thank you for your efforts in trying to keep our community safe. This is, I think there's probably several different areas that we could name off where your department's active in trying to be at the forefront of prevention and the measuring of how these diseases affect our community. This is just one of them that is serious. We don't see it just running through our community without check, but that's because of the good work that you all do. So I just want to say thank you for keeping this in the front of our minds and help us in our responsibility of prevention. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Retirement, item C, presentation of retirement clock to Richard Usen, Buddy Presnell, and Sharon Willetts.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Eileen McNichol, your Director of Human Resources. We have the opportunity this morning to honor and to thank three of our employees who have served our community with dedication, commitment, and pride. It's with great respect that I present to you these three employees who are going to be reaching an employment milestone and retiring on April 1st, 2015. The first employee is Richard Usen, our county counselor. Richard was hired on January 1, 1981, as a senior trial attorney. He became acting county counselor on September 18, 1996. He was promoted to county counselor on March 3, 1997, and his last day of service with us will be Monday, March 23, 2015. Thank you, Richard, for over 34 years of dedication to Sedgwick County. And if you would come forward, please.
Well, I have a few things I want to read here first and then recognize Rich and allow him to speak. Richard is preceded by three generations of Kansas. His great-grandfather co-owned Bitman Todd Wholesale Grocery Company in Leavenworth and was one of the first such establishments west of Missouri. When he was 11 years old, he attended a boys' camp where he was awarded a trophy for the loudest camper, which was a brass bugle welded on top of a wine punch can. In 8th grade, he and two of his classmates formed a folk music group called Old Town Trio, named after a section of his suburb in Chicago. Throughout high school, they played numerous school functions and at different venues around the Chicago area, including a private party for the movie actor Forrest Tucker. Their senior year, they made a record of the songs they most liked to perform. Some other interesting facts, when Rich was first hired on, there were only three county commissioners. And just a few months earlier, Park City and Bel Air had just become incorporated cities. The Coliseum was built four years prior, and the building of the city today was called the New Courthouse. Additionally, during his 34 years, he's provided legal counsel to 23 county commissioners. And he has attended close to, or approximately 800 BOCC meetings during his 18 years as county counselor. So with that, I want to say thank you to Richard for all his work and congratulate him and wish him the best in his retirement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you very much. I have heard that they are, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's very humbling. And Chairman Ranzau, you left out, you left out the story about smoking a cigar in my office, which happened back in 1981, and a lot of people smoked in their offices and in front offices. And I haven't done it since, but that was going on at that time. Commissioners, it's, I had no idea I had attended that many commission meetings. I knew it was a lot. I've certainly learned a lot and enjoyed every one of them. It's just, it's just an absolute honor to work with you guys and your predecessors. You know, I think public service is an honor in and of itself, but you guys are elected by tens of thousands of responsible voters, and that certainly makes it an honor for me in my office to represent you every day and to represent the department heads here at the county. I was in Chairman Ranzau's office a couple of months ago, and he said, "Rich, are you sure you want to retire?" And I said, "No, I'm not. I'm ready for it, but I really don't want to leave." You commissioners and department heads and everybody have just been so, so very respectful of me and our office. You've given us the tools that we need. You've been very supportive of all of us. We've had some pretty serious litigation challenges recently, and you've allowed us to be able to handle those appropriately, and so I appreciate that. That's kind of hard to leave that, but on the other hand, you know, I do think this is time. I was going to retire a year ago, and a good friend of mine suggested that maybe I was a little too close to some things that happen in my life, and maybe I should just go ahead and, with your guys' willingness, serve a little longer, and I've done that, and I'm certainly glad I did, but this is certainly the time to do that. So with me, I take that respect. I take the joy of working with committed and very dedicated colleagues who are very capable. They've certainly made me look better than I deserved to look, and I take that with me, too. I was going through some old articles and getting ready to vacate my office, and I ran across one about Bill Graves, who served as governor for two terms. And at the end of his second term, he was asked to name the most important accomplishments in his terms of office. And he said, "I was honest every day, and I didn't embarrass the state." That's what I've tried to do for you, is to be honest every day and not embarrass the county. And... county, and I appreciate this great career. Thanks very much.
Before Rich gets out of there, I, Rich, first of all, if you know Rich, when he's thinking, he's got his pen in his hand. So I'm thinking right now about you, Rich. First of all, my first thought is that, you know, under siege today are government employees. And you look at Rich Usen, and you know, he's been a faithful public servant and government employee for 34 years. And I will stand before you to say, and we have a whole army of those at Sedgwick County, but that upholds the highest ideals of what public service is all about. I mean, Rich Usen could be the poster child for that in our community, but he represents so many other government employees that does that every day for the good of our community, and I appreciate it. I would like to apologize, though, as the longest-serving county commissioner, for the 800 meetings you've had to endure. A public apology for that, because no man should have to endure that many meetings with us. Finally, you can be described in many ways, Rich: counselor, attorney, but for me, the greatest achievement you've given me is friendship. Thank you, my friend, and go Cubs.
Rich, I'd also like to make a couple of comments. I consider us to be good friends, but loudest camper is a part of our relationship that I have, that escapes me a little bit. I would never have thought that you'd have won that award, but, because I, I can see you being somewhat embarrassed by the fact that we showed our respect by giving you a standing ovation. You do not look for that sort of accolades. I think that that's actually part of the reasons you've been such a great county counselor, is that you have not looked for headlines, not, you've never, in my opinion, ever promoted yourself. You've just tried to do a good job, and, and in doing that, you've remained nonpartisan in all your comments and dealings. You've, you've shown great leadership, not only as our lead county counselor, as you came and talked to commissioners, but I see the way that you operate your office. You have developed a great, great staff of attorneys, and they have their different niches where they seem to have special expertise, but you've managed that very well, and you've done a great job of bringing us outside counsel when we needed that particular expertise. So done a, a great job of leadership and management. I think you've been accurate in the advice that you've always given to us. I mean, I, in the times I've been here, I don't know that we've been on the downside of very many issues, done a great job of steering us through a lot of difficult times. And I would, I would just like to second that you, you definitely fulfill the ideal or the standard that you mentioned, where you always wanted to be honest, and you didn't want to bring embarrassment to the county, and that simply has not happened. You've done a great job. Really appreciate you. We're going to miss you, and because we're friends, I'm not going away, so I'll still be around to talk with you. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say something as well. I've only been here for about three months, and so I guess I bring a different perspective. I just wanted to say that as I come into the county, one thing that really impresses me is the quality of our leadership and our management that's gotten us to the point that we are at today. And you're one of our chief staff that has been a great part of that. So I want to say thank you for carrying that baton as you have for 34 years, and as you hand that off, I know we've got some very capable staff that you've prepared for this day, and I have total faith and confidence that they'll do the great job that you have done these last 34 years. But you've been quiet, but you've been extremely professional, and you've just done a tremendous job. So as, as my colleagues have said, the loudest camper, I don't quite see that part, but you have just really impressed me, and I just know whatever you're going to do the rest of your life, and you've got a lot of years ahead of you because you're, you're very young in spirit, and you'd pick a great time to retire. So I am, I am envious. I think you're, you've done a great job. I just, just want to say thank you for what you've done. I have only been here for about three months, and you've been here, by my calculations, 308 months. So I've got a long ways to go, but just thank you for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, Rich, before you get away, could you, would you want to offer an opinion now that you're leaving? Is it three commissioners or five commissioners better to work with?
You're all good to work with. Thanks.
Our next employee is Buddy Presnell. He is a fire division chief. Buddy was hired on as a firefighter on December 31st, 1981. He was promoted to a fire lieutenant on April 8th, 1990, a fire captain on March 1, 1998, and on July 11th, 2004, Buddy was promoted to a fire division chief. His last day of service with us will be Saturday, March 21st, 2015. Thank you, Buddy, for serving our community for over 34 years.
A few more things about Buddy. He started in the fire service May 1973 for the city of Augusta and Butler County Fire District Number Two, and then continued on to Sedgwick County for a total of almost 42 years in the fire service. His nickname is Box Car Buddy. One of his hobbies are trains. Another hobby is live steam. He has operated a 1913 K steam track, traction engine along with several scale tractors. He has been the fireman and engineer on a former Denver and Rio Grande Western locomotive in New Mexico and Colorado on a 64-mile run. Buddy has a loving spouse, Dorothy, along with four adult children and seven grandchildren, all under the age of 12. His immediate future plans will probably include driving a ready-mix truck part-time and building a garage that he's been waiting on for a while. On behalf of Sedgwick County, we'd like to thank you for your service here and your total of 42 years of service, and wish you the best in retirement for you and your family. And thank you very much and congratulations.
My bosses are all afraid I've got a real big bad speech. Anyway, here, hold that. Thank you. Congratulations, Richard. I've been around as long as you have. Actually, December's when I came to work, so I was trying to think of how long Richard had been here, because it seems like every time you turn around, Richard has been here. It's been an interesting career. Like I said, I started, actually, it was called Future Firefighters at age 14 with the gusto volunteers. And back in those days, there wasn't so much legal ramifications of everything, so we got to ride on trucks and ride on the front of the grass trucks and put out grass fires. They taught us how to pump, so that we could free up the older gentleman to go, older's a bad term, isn't it? But more experienced and of age that could go in and fight the fire. So worked up through there, became a volunteer firefighter. Actually, was kind of born into it a little bit. My father was a volunteer with Augusta, and I can remember, eight years old, sitting in a station wagon with two siblings, and if you get out of this truck, I'm going to beat you, and watching them put out a fire. So I've been around it a day or two. Sedgwick County's experience has been a lot of fun. I've met a lot of good people. Once I've got promoted to the division chief rank, I've got more headaches, got to deal with the county manager's office and legal. There's several persons out here that have helped the fire district out on quite a few things, and me personally dealt with risk management, worked with the sheriff's department, worked with EMS employees. That's kind of the coolest thing about at least this level of the department. There's so many people you get to meet, and so many things you get to do, and stuff you get to see. You know, there's a lot of agencies you work with. The bad thing is you also get to see some very detrimental things. We've been through several tornadoes in 34 years, a few plane crashes, some pretty serious wrecks, a couple of train derailments, that kind of stuff. That goes with the job. So I won't miss the bad things. I miss running calls. I got to go out the other day, we had a spillout by Goddard, and it's kind of like, this is where I should be, he's out here doing this. But the younger guys are more able to do that. My physique and my fitness level don't quite let me do that so much anymore. As you get older, you kind of lose a little bit of that. And so it's time to step back and do something different. I'm not really sure what. Like I said, I, I drive ready-mix, that's what I started out of high school, kind of, and it's a comfort zone. It's just something to do right now to kind of bide some time. I've got some other hobbies to do, the, the trains and that kind of thing, and, and like I said, we've got seven grandchildren. One of the couples is talking about adding another one, and you put all them together, it's a circus in the house. So that keeps you rather busy in settling arguments between the adults. So again, I, I thank the past commissions. Chief Nichols hired me, promoted me once, I believe. Chief Kermode promoted me to captain and division chief, and now I'm working under Chief Leake. Like I said, it's been a good experience, worked with some of the commissioners, and I will miss that. I will miss the people that I get to interact with and, and talk to, and hopefully I'll bump into them off and on. Thanks for your time.
Well, Buddy, thank you for your years of service. One thing I know about firefighters, they, they don't go away very easily. They're still in the brotherhood. You'll stay connected to your, your brothers in the fire service. We hope that you'll stay connected to Sedgwick County, too, because you have had years and years of service. You know, I've been through some of those disasters, the Bruce Grain and a tornado, and I understand the importance of fire service and individuals like yourself that are willing to, to run in when others are running out, and we really appreciate that. I hope that your big garage houses all your hobbies and that you can spend a lot of peaceful time in that garage, having a good time in your retirement, regardless of what else you do, and enjoy those grandkids, because there's never enough time for that.
That's true.
We appreciate your service, and it's great having your friendship for all these years. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And Buddy, I'd just add to Commissioner Norton's remarks, so that we, we truly want to thank you for your service in, in public safety. Sometimes we don't have quite as much interaction with everybody in the fire department. You guys are busy, and you kind of have your own structure and organization, but I, every time I've had involvement, you've been there, and I know that in your leadership position that you have exerted influence, and that to me, in my evaluation, we have an excellent, outstanding fire district, and it's folks with your type of leadership and dedication to public safety who've made it that way. So thanks for your service to our citizens in our county.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I could just go ahead and add to that. I miscalculated. It's over 400 months. It's a long time. And it's a faithful, faithful service to a position of public, public service, public safety. I just want to say thank you for what you've done. Sound like a guy that's after my own heart. Firefighter, ready-mix, ready-mix truck driver, I would love to do that, too, and then, of course, trains. And so those are three things I think that any one of us guys would probably just really like to be in your shoes, and so, yeah, again, a lot of things to look forward to, and I thank you for your service.
Thanks. Counting months, just to put it in kind of a perspective, 34 years, we work a 24/48 schedule, so we're here 24 hours off 48. 11 years, I have spent in a firehouse in four walls, 24/7, 365. That's just an interesting tidbit. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our last employee to recognize is Sharon Willetts. She's a detention captain with the sheriff's office. Sharon was hired on November 13th, 1989, and was promoted to detention sergeant on January 18th, 1997, and to detention lieutenant on January 4th, 2004. December 19th, 2011, Sharon was promoted to detention captain. Sharon's last day of service with us will be Saturday, March 21, 2015. Thank you, Sharon, for serving our community for over 26 years.
And a few more items of interest. Sharon's favorite hobby is traveling. She's been to the Dominican Republic, Canada, Tahiti, Hawaii, Sweden, Finland, Russia, Estonia, England, Scotland, Italy, France, Spain, and Monaco. I also think she's been, at least been to Saudi Arabia as well. And she's listed all but four of the United States. A goal of hers is to visit every unit within the national park system. That's got to be a lot. Sharon started with the sheriff's office in 1989 at the old jail, when the current jail was just finishing construction. To get the jail finished a little quicker, she said some of us were drafted into helping put epoxy coating on the floors in the new jail. So that's her second job, I guess, now in retirement. But she was also a military policeman and corrections MP in the Army on active duty, where she served three years at the military prison in Fort Leavenworth, on the right side of the bar, she wants to make sure you know. And another interesting tidbit is Sharon and I were in the same Army Reserve Military Police Unit, and we served together in Desert Storm, where we transported probably tens of thousands of prisoners, I think. I've known Sharon previously in the Army Reserve. She was an excellent soldier and on commission's officer, very professional, very capable, and proud to have served with her then, as well as now. And I know she's done a wonderful job with the sheriff's office as well, and wish her the best of luck, and congratulations on her retirement.
I did leave off Saudi Arabia, so I guess I could add Kuwait and Iraq to that as well, briefly. Not, not as a tourist. I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed my time with the sheriff's office, been proud to work for the county and the sheriff's office. And in the last few years, I've had the opportunity to work pretty closely with folks from other departments within the county, county councilor's office, purchasing, HR especially, and DIO, and I've, I've had nothing but good things to say about all those interactions. I've got no long speech, that's it.
Sometimes short and simple speeches are very effective.
Especially when you're the last one, and everybody's ready to go with the rest of the meeting.
Well, I don't know about that. One thing I learned just now is that my bucket list sucks big time. And if you hadn't traveled to Hayesville, come on down sometime. That was one place not mentioned, so I'll offer it up to you. Thank you for your years of service. You know, so many times, folks in the sheriff's department and detention are those unsung heroes that work in law enforcement that people just don't see every day, but that continue to grind in working in some tough conditions and, and protecting our citizens in a different manner. And we really appreciate those years of service that you've done there. And as a side note, thanks for your service to the United States of America. We appreciate that, too. Thank you, and have a great retirement.
Sharon, I'd just like to add my comment. I want to thank you for your service in public safety to the citizens of Sedgwick County. You've worked in an environment that it's oftentimes not the most, the best environment to work in. I think that's evidenced by the fact that over in the detention facility, there's, seems to be always a need to fill vacant slots, because there's quite a bit of turnover. But you've persevered and done a great job and advanced in your rank, shows your leadership qualities, and we're just proud that you've been there through quite a, quite a series of changes, from building that jail to a couple of expansions and to try to keep up with that detained population and, and going through the changes we made to get that under control. So you've, you've seen a lot of changes in, in criminal justice and how we apply it in the adult side. But appreciate your service, and I also hope that you have a great and rewarding retirement.
I'd like to continue on. I just want to say thank you again for your service as well. Desert Shield is, I participated in that same part of our nation's history, so I thank you. Just nice to know that we have that in common. And I was, I was touring the facility, Sheriff Easter's facility, just next door here, just a few weeks ago, and then he, he went out of his way to point you out, and he was very proud of you. I could tell he was anxious to show me some of, some of his staff, but he made a point to, to talk about you specifically, and I know he was really proud of you, and he wanted to let me know that you were unfortunately going to be leaving his staff, and he was, I, I think you're just making the point that sometimes replacing good people is difficult, and you were one of his best. the point that sometimes replacing good people is difficult, and you were one of his best. And so, I just want to say thank you. Clearly came from his perspective. I, one of my takeaways was that you were very special that day, and so, again, thank you for your service. Uh, you're leaving a very key role, that's, I'm sure it's going to be very hard to fill that position, but, uh, thank you again for all your years of service to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, and we consider it time served, by the way.[778.44][778.44](laughter) (applause)
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item D, Resolution Appointing Susan Earle-Wine to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Euson, County Councilor. This item, uh, together with, uh, Item E, are, are both appointments. Item E is, um, Commissioner Norton's appointment to this board, and is to appoint, uh, Thomas Odennettle. They are both, uh, four-year terms, and I would recommend you approve the resolutions for Items D and E.
I move we approve Items, uh, D and E together, and swear both individuals in at the same time.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranza.
Aye.
And Thomas is here, too.
And we have, okay, Susan and Thomas both are here. We have Karen Bailey with the clerk's office. You can swear them in.
It's Thomas.
Yeah, he, he's right here.
If you just raise your right hand, I'll state the oath. We can say I do at the end. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board. So, help me God.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Unruh for appointing me to this board. I deal with animal issues in my job and environmental, and also, uh, talk about them in courses I teach at WSU in Friends. So, I'm really looking forward to learning more by being a member of this board, and really appreciate the appointment. Thank you.
See, I'm not real big on speeches. I'm more of the brass tacks, get it done. It's an honor to be appointed to a, a board of this stature. Um, I'll do my best, everything I can. I'm not in the business of right and wrong, like most people think, because regardless of law enforcement stature, animal control is part of the nitty-gritty. And a lot of people on the streets say, "Well, you're not right," or "That's wrong." We're not in the business of right and wrong. We're in the business of what is legal and illegal versus city ordinances, state statutes. And it's my personal history that better upholding these and staying true to one thing will get me through everything I try. I'm a Kansas farm boy, born and raised. I'm moved around from Midwestern Kansas to Sedgwick County, to Butler County, and I've found that every step of the way, public safety is a rewarding career. And as I start out my career, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I would just like to express thanks to both of these individuals for their willingness to serve. Uh, this does require a little bit of time, and, uh, and paying attention, and probably doing a little bit of research, but, uh, we, we, we do take these boards seriously, and appreciate that you're willing to, uh, step up and serve that way. And I know Susan brings a special category of expertise to the board with her experience in, uh, in the environment, and I think that is, um, appropriate to bring to this board. So, looking forward to the way that you can help, um, advance our understanding and the perspective on some of the issues you face. And I know that the board's gone through, um, some iterations of development and kind of, uh, changed its structure and went back the way it was before, but we're looking forward to, that this board will be active, productive, and helpful to our citizens. So, thank you both for your willingness.
Commissioner Norton.
Well, I'm certainly glad to, to vote to promote, or keep Susan Earle-Wine on the board. I'm glad that Thomas, uh, was, was willing to serve. I talked to Mayor Armstrong and, and Will Black down in Hayesville, and, uh, they have great faith in, in his ability to serve. And I, I like the attitude that he has, that he's kind of the boots-on-the-ground, because as you have an animal control board, you need a real-life experience. Uh, you can have someone in the academic community kind of talk at the ma- macro level, but having somebody that does it every day and deals with citizens and animals i- in those times is going to be very profound for the new board that we've put together. So, I thank Thomas and Susan both for their willingness to serve. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Resolution Appointing Andre Cisco to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging.
And Commissioners, we've prepared this resolution. This is also a four-year appointment to this board, and I would recommend you adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adopt the resolution. Second. We have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranza.
Aye.
I don't believe Andre's here today, so we'll have, uh, council's office connect with her later. Next item, please.
New Business, Item G, Schedule a Public Hearing for Adoption of New Residential Building Code Within the Wichita-Cedric County Unified Building and Trade Code to Replace the Existing Residential Code Within the UBT C.
Morning Chairman and Commission. Tom Stolz, Director of Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department here this morning, to request the scheduling of a public hearing regarding the adoption of new residential codes for Wichita-Cedric County. As you may recall, this jurisdiction adopted new trade codes, uh, at the first of the year, and are similarly now looking to adopt 2012 International Residential Codes, which will give us code guidance regarding construction of single-family and duplex styles of residence. Over the last year and a half, staff and members of the Wichita Area Builders Association have been reviewing local residential building code together, so that a reasonable and best-practice building code can be adopted. These discussions have been shared at numerous meetings that have been open to the public, and we've gotten good input from, uh, citizens and contractors. Like other government jurisdictions around the country, Cedric County has historically adopted local building codes from recognized national and international organizations. Members of these organizations are industry experts in the fields of residential and commercial building construction. The code guidelines they produce every three years are generally viewed as best practices for the construction industry nationwide. As mentioned, when we adopted the trade codes, there are three main reasons why local jurisdictions adopt code in this manner. First and foremost, it represents a way to enhance public safety for our citizens through best-practice application regarding designs and construction of homes and commercial buildings. Secondly, it helps to ensure basic consistency of building practices between jurisdictional lines and consideration to building professionals who operate in and around Wichita and Sedgwick County. And finally, it serves to achieve consistent and fair operational protocol for building professionals who are licensed and operating in Cedric County. Both the Wichita Area Builders Association and the Board of Candid, uh, Board of Code Standards Advisory Board, uh, have supported, uh, the adoption of this code and moving forward with this. If this public hearing request is approved today, our plan is to continue public discussion with citizens and contractors regarding proposed amendment, adoptions, and changes to code. Additionally, I will recommend that we defer a commission vote after the public hearing to at least allow another few days for any potential discussion which may arise from citizens during that meeting. The staff request today is to set the public hearing for April 22nd, Board of County Commission Meeting, and instruct the county clerk to publish the notice of public hearing once in the official county newspaper. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Lonnie, would you like to comment on this item?
Lonnie Wright, 1721, South Lululeu, Wichita. Uh, I also want to recognize the people that have been involved in going through these code reviews. It takes a lot of time. Cedric County supported the first joint review for the 2012, uh, and we had inspectors from, um, the surrounding cities involved, builders, maybe 25 or 30 people, because we had to identify the changes, uh, in two code cycles, from the '06 to '09, and from the '09 to '12. Then, once you identify what those changes are, we do our normal process of amending or deleting out, uh, requirements that are so strict. You know, it's a national, uh, code, and the people do a good job of that, and I think still protecting the people, but anything that could be too costly, you know, we normally delete out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie.
With the chairman, if there's no other, uh, people to address us, or no other discussion, I move that we set the public hearing for April 22nd and take the appropriate action to notify the public.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Seeing no further comments, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranza.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on March 12, 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of March 12th for the Board of Bids and Contracts has three items that we'd like for you to, uh, consider. Item number one is the change order, number one, for the amendment to the client drug testing for Corrections Department. This recommendation is to accept the change order, which increases the not-to-exceed amount from $40,000 to $75,000 with Technical Resource Management doing business as NORCAM, for the established contract term of three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is food staples for juvenile detention facilities, Corrections Department. The recommendation is to accept the best proposal from US Foods Incorporated and establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item three, is the 2015 crack seal for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pavement Pros LLC in the amount of I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I do recommend approval of all three items.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second. Do we have any comments from citizens? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranza.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I'd recommend you approve it.
What's the will of the board?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Ranza.
Aye.
Now, we have reached the time for other Commissioners. Is there anything you would have for the other portion? Commissioner Unruh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to, uh, let our citizens know that, uh, we had a group of three folks from Tulsa, from the state of Oklahoma, up here to check out our, um, adult detention and juvenile detention and, and corrections activities. They have an overcrowding problem in their adult facility, and they have, uh, they're faced with the requirement to build a new juvenile detention facility, and, um, because of the great work done here, um, by Mark Masterson and, um, the leadership of our public safety, um, Marvin Duncan, uh, and they, the great strides that we've made in trying to help the sheriff administer the jail population, they thought this was the place to come and check it, check us out. So, three folks came up. They were here for about a half a day on Thursday last week and a half a day on Friday, and, um, sheriff gave them a tour of the jail, and, um, Marvin Duncan and Mark Masterson took them through all our corrections and juvenile justice programs. Um, I've heard back from them, and they were very thankful that we were able to, uh, offer this tour and the information on how we have been managing our populations. The main reason, I guess, I want to bring it up, is I would just like, um, our citizen to know that, uh, we, we do present an, an example in how to best manage populations, provide public safety, do it at a, as low a cost as we can, and, um, and have evidence-based pro- practices that do produce positive results. So, um, they had a good time, and we're very grateful that we were able to share some of the things that we've learned over the years. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Norton.
Well, I didn't really have anything, but I would like to dovetail on to what Commissioner Unruh has said. You know, we were started down the path, probably 10 years ago, of having to build a pretty significant addition onto the jail, and, uh, all of us lamented that. We swallowed hard. We put together the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. We, we had some consultants give us some data and some information and kind of open up the belly of the beast of our law enforcement and judiciary and, and jail and incarceration system. And at that time, we did, we decided not to build, uh, addition onto the jail and embarked on a lot of programs and, and, uh, investments in trying to reduce that population. And today, where the trajectory would have been 22 to 2400 population in our jail, it's around 1300. Uh, I think the savings out of that is well into the millions now, and, uh, it is a hallmark, a benchmark for many communities like Tulsa to come and look at because of the hard work done over many, many years to try to figure that out. And it wasn't just the county commission, it was the county manager's office, the sheriff's office, the judiciary, the DA, all thinking and orchestration about, how do you make this work, and how do you reduce the population, uh, in times when, uh, it, it's pretty tough and you don't have any money. So, I, I think it was a testament to that hard work that Tulsa would recognize. Maybe they need to come here and see what can be done if you make some tough decisions. So, thanks for sharing that, Commissioner. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, anything else to come before the board?
Yes, sir.
Would it be under chorus if we said, "Go Shocks"?
Oh, yeah. It might be, but it's okay.[1740.01][1740.01](laughter) Go Shocks. And, uh...
Well, just on one last note, Susan and I are heading out tomorrow to travel to Omaha to be there to represent the county commission. Well, maybe not, just to rep- (laughter) Uh, we're, we're pretty excited. We're great Shocker fans, and, uh, hopefully they'll move forward, and, and the state of Kansas will get to see their two great teams, uh, play each other, and, and we can all be proud of Kansas and root for both teams equally, because, uh, it is a great day for us to have that kind of basketball presence in our state. So, go Shocks.
Well, we, we don't want to count our chickens before their hatches. I mean, the Shockers may end up playing Northeastern or whoever, so, let's just wait and see what happens. Um, with that, I think we better adjourn.[1793.41][1793.41](laughter)[1794.41]